Start County Commission to order. It's Tuesday, December 7, 2021. We'll do the pledge first of all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next we'll have the ratifying of the agenda. And that's first of all, we got some changes to that. We'll be removing the library. They're not coming in today. And then also there will be no park board meeting today. In place of that, we'll have the website design for the Start County website design. And also, I guess, we'll be adding Bellfield Billings County ambulance service. Any other changes to agenda?
Move to approve as amended?
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those who support was the motion carried. Next, we have the minutes for November 2, 2021. Is there any changes to that or corrections? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the November 2, 2021 minutes.
I'm going to accept the minutes.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Roll call vote then. Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. She's told that she's gonna be late. Next, we have a special meeting for November 19. Is there any changes to that? Now I'll look for a motion to approve November 19, special meeting in 2021.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Okay. Roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next, we'll go to counts payable. Is there any questions on the counts payable? And you also have the supplement and the...
Just real quickly, the 2370 for governor governing board? What that is?
Here it is.
The 2370?
Two thousand three hundred seventy.
Yeah.
That would be, that should be payroll.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's either payroll or it's from the conference getting reimbursed for mileage.
Okay, got it.
So it's probably a combination.
Thank you.
Any other questions, accounts payable? Not like looking for a motion to approve accounts payable. Motion to approve accounts payable. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Okay. Roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Artthod.
Sure. Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have a report from Sheriff Corey Lee.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. The report for the month of November for the Start County Sheriff's Department. Total calls for service were thirteen hundred and forty-two. This is up from one thousand ninety-five last year. So that's a significant uptick. Two hundred and forty-eight traffic stops. This is up from two hundred and one last year. Eighty-seven stops from the city Dickinsons, one hundred and sixty-one stops from the county at neighboring small towns. We had one hundred and eighty-one public relations stops. That's up from one hundred and fifty-one last year. Twelve bar checks. That's up from four last year. Six theft-related calls for service. This is down from twenty-three last year. What we typically see there in November, December, a lot of holiday-related thefts, mailbox stuff, packages, stuff, I guess. Whatever reason, we didn't see those this year. So far, so good. Hopefully that keeps up for this month as well. Seventeen canine usages, twenty-nine agency assists. What we're seeing there is a lot. The city of Dickinson has really been taking a beating here the past couple of months. Every time I'm out on patrol, excuse me, the CAD, which is our computer system, is constantly rad for them. They're constantly, seems like they're holding calls and asking us to assist them. Responded to fourteen accidents, zero pedestrians, zero fatality, one hit-and-run, seven injury, and six property. There was one hundred and thirteen total arrests for the month of November. It's the most I've ever seen since I've been with the sheriff's department. I don't think I've ever seen it over a hundred. Thanksgiving night, we had a pursuit starting at mile marker sixty-one and ending in Morton County at mile marker ninety-seven. The pursuit was initiated. Someone was coming eastbound one hundred and twenty miles an hour. Our deputy clocked them and got turned around on. The pursuit maintained one hundred and twenty miles an hour until they were spiked. Once they got into Morton County. Of all the counties that surround us, we probably worked together least with Morton County. So it was nice to see us work together and have no issues there. But that ended peacefully. The driver gave up as soon as he hit the spikes and pulled off on exit ninety-seven there. The following evening, it was a similar stop on I-84 resulted in multiple arrests. There was a large variety in amount of narcotics that were seized as well. As well as a firearm as a result of a canine usage. So good to see the dogs are working. And we took a fairly large amount of narcotics off the road there. So. Any questions?
So the increase in arrests, what were they mostly? What were the reasons for?
So when we log arrests, that can be anything from driving under suspension to a warrant. Domestics. You know, I was looking through there yesterday. It seemed like the bulk of them were warrants. And, you know, like I said, there's a few domestics. A lot of it's gonna be traffic-related stuff though as well. So.
So nothing really?
Nothing, yeah, out of the, some of the domestics were pretty, or at least two of them were pretty serious. They involved firearms. So. All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, thanks. Okay. Next, vote superintendent Al Heiser.
Good morning, everyone. Just kind of give you a little rundown what road crews up to this time of the year. We're transferring material. Days that are really cold, we haul scoria up north to Gladstone to stockpile in various locations where we need it. And when the temperatures are above freezing, we pick up gravel and get it closer to where we need it for this coming season. Todd and Gary, they're working on a few culverts, fixing ends up and putting some end sections that kind of fell off this time. On December 16, we have a winter maintenance training at the county shop. North Dakota LTAP is putting that on. And we're expecting between forty to fifty attendees. We've got some guest speakers, some of the DOT and some LTAP speakers. And there's gonna be a speaker there that actually builds these plow trucks. You know, these new plow trucks are getting pretty sophisticated with hydraulics and ways they're operated. So kind of help the guys understand and, you know, apply the right amount of chemical and salt when we need to, different types of storm. Another item there, I've got on here a water tanker of the rural fire department. I was visiting with Karen if, and I think there's some, Karen, if I'm correct, come around, there's some 2020 ARPA funds that may be available. It's for a tanker we could use. And we use that a lot to go out to rural fires. This is a vac tank where it'll be kind of nice. We can just pull out, pressure it up, and then load off. And a lot of times, we use our tandems for the same thing. So that's...
Yes, there is still some of the 2020 ARPA funds. If you wanted to pay for the tanker out of the ARPA funds, that's up to the commission.
And the tanker costs nineteen thousand. The tanker that I found was, is used very little. It's been kind of sitting in weeds for quite a few years. So. It actually pretty good buy for a...
How big is that?
Sixty-five hundred gallon. So.
So it's both a vac and a pump?
Yeah, you can actually suck on and you can push off. You just air the tank up and then the pressure actually applies the water. So I guess if, we'd have to have a motion, Karen, too.
I would make a motion to go forward with that tanker with the ARPA funds.
Twenty twenty ARPA funds?
Yes.
Okay, you have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Now, roll call vote. Commissioner Messer, I mean Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Artthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Okay, another item. The county engineers convention is gonna be held in Dickinson this year. It'll be on the end of January. So if any of you commissioners, you're all welcome to attend. I just need to know. So we have to get you registered. So. It's, I think you probably had an invite sent out to you, but it's, like I said, like the last week in January of 2020, it's up here at the story. If any of you are interested, just let me know. And then one other item, Jim Katamis with Interstate Engineering is gonna follow up behind me on a report on a project that they're working on for us. So. I'm done. If anybody else got any questions.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, commissioners.
Just state your name, please.
Sorry?
State your name for...
Jim Katamis with Interstate Engineering. So we've been selected to do a box culvert bridge replacement. West of South Heart, on the south side of the tracks. Field data collection has been completed utilizing ground topo, structure scans, and lidar data obtained from the water commission. That surface model is being created this week, so design can begin as soon as a route is approved. That is the route that, that's our preliminary route. It's color-coded. If anybody wanted to take a look, it is staked. Yellow being the proposed right-of-way, green being the gravel shoulder, and blue being center line. We're scheduled for a field review meeting with Superintendent Heiser and major landowners along the route on Monday, the 13th. The attached photo depicts our proposed route. Location of the structure in question forces a dangerous curve in the roadway. We propose moving the alignment to promote a safer roadway. And hopefully void the need for the secondary structure located closer to South Heart. Depending on the hydraulic analysis, we feel we may be able to replace this secondary box culvert with reinforced concrete pipe and well-designed erosion control.
So you'll be eliminating the second structure and you're putting a new one in?
South of the bridge replacement, yeah, along the channel there.
Yeah, that is a pretty sharp curve right there.
Yeah. We're hoping to eliminate that secondary structure. We'll have to wait for the analysis. That's the plan.
Maybe this, I got a quick question, probably more for Al than anyone. So when you relocate an easement, do you give up the first one?
Yes.
Okay.
And like I said, that, that bridge is on a nasty curve. A lot of people, they don't quite make it, ended up into trees there. A number of years ago, we were gonna replace it, and we had some opposition for some other reasons. But now everybody is kind of in favor of, and I think it's a great idea if we can eliminate one of the structures. Because I've seen that whole flat underwater over the years. So I think a new alignment to eliminate that curve would really be great.
That eliminates that curve and makes the other one a pretty sharp. So that'd be a good deal.
Hey, any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't need any motions or anything on this too, y'all? Okay. Next, we go with Highland Engineering.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Mike Ness, Highlands Engineering. Quick report today. Working on a bridge replacement project as well, fifteen miles south of Richardson, about eight miles east. Wetland delineation, cultural resource, land surveys are completed. We are expecting to get the aquatic resource report, wetland delineation report in this week. So we can then send out our solicitation of views letters to all the federal, state, and local agencies. So. We did a preliminary size, but it should be about a twenty-foot by fourteen-foot box culvert that will replace that bridge. So. Hoping for a bid date in May, June. It's tentatively approved for funding. We're waiting on DOT and federal highway approval for this additional funding coming from the federal legislation that just passed on infrastructure package. So. Does anybody have any questions?
What's your completion date on that one?
Do you think? Completion, construction?
Yeah.
Well, we're hoping for 2022, end of 2022.
It's not a 23 project.
We're hoping not. So, other than that, we've been doing some gravel testing on the Miller Bob pit by Taylor. That should be done this week, the crushing. So we've been doing the testing on that. So. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Next, we go to Northern Plains.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Jeremy Wood, Northern Plains Engineering. Few updates for the commission. We still have an active construction project going on in December, which is pretty unusual. But I guess we take it when we get it, I guess. But starting with 30th Street on the county line northeast of Dickinson, that project is done. We have to submit the final records through the DOT to secure the funding. But that project is complete. The road's open. So just down to final records. The other project that is under active construction is located on 127th Avenue. And I see there's some photos up on the screen. And just to give the commissioners and I guess the audience a perspective, that box culvert is about twenty-three, twenty-three feet wide by, I believe it's fourteen feet high. So it's, it's a pretty big structure. They have it about halfway backfilled right now. They're still backfilling. Cold weather's slowing things up, obviously, but they're, they're working at it. And I think the intention is to obviously get traffic open this fall slash winter and probably do some cleanup type work in the spring when conditions are a little bit better. But I would like to think by next week that traffic should be over it. One way or the other, it should be done. So. Yeah, that project is definitely going to be a carryover project into next year. So. Switching to design projects, couple bid openings planned. Eighty-third Avenue and Eighty-sixth Avenue, south of Richardson, down by Trap, Gabharts, and Eric Kuntz. That is set up for a spring bid opening. We're not sure if it's February or March, but we know it's secured for March. It might actually be a February bid opening. But get that project bid here in the next couple, three months. Construction sometime next year for that project. Couple other projects we're, we're working with the DOT on, 127th and 131st. We found some artifacts on the 127th Avenue project. We're working with the State Archaeologists on further testing, if that's required or not. So. A little bit in limbo on that one until we get an answer. We're kind of done everything we can, but we might have to do some further testing on that project. Another project on 131st, this is north of Bellfield. We have the environmental studies done. We are trying to secure some federal aid funding for that project through the DOT. They are still trying to determine which projects are eligible. It seems like this one's eligible. But how that funding process works out, they're a little unsure. But I think we're in line for the funding as soon as they make the kind of criteria determined on that project. And I guess I think the last project that we have is a newer project on 38th Street. That is southwest of Richardson, just east of Duane Sattlers. We have the survey done, the design done. We actually met with Duane yesterday, and he signed the easement. So I think we're ready to go to a bid opening on that project. And because of publishing deadlines and requirements, the earliest we can bid it is February. So that's what we would like to do is bid that in February. I think it's in the budget to do that. So that's what we would like to do is, is bid it as soon as possible, which is February.
When you find artifacts like that, I mean, can it actually stop the whole project and not finish? I mean, you already had a road there. You already had a bridge there. And all of a sudden, we, what do we do?
Yeah, worst-case scenario, yeah, it kind of shuts the project down. Or the, maybe a worse case, worst-case scenario than that is they have the county do exhaustive testing, which costs tens of thousands of dollars, which is not eligible or reimbursable through federal aid. So you're paying that one hundred percent. But that's...
But I mean, the road, we need the road there, right?
Right. Yeah, you know, we, we make that argument all the time and advocate on behalf of that. Trying to make that argument to an environmentalist archaeologist is getting to be harder and harder to make that argument that, I mean, we even talked about, can we put the box over in the exact same location and within the disturbed areas, previously disturbed areas, and we're getting pushed back from that?
So, okay.
Yeah. But what we're waiting for right now is, is some clarity on what other testing would be required for us to proceed.
Would we have to make a road that goes around that area? Or what would we do then?
That's, that's a possibility. And to make things even worse, this, this site is probably, I would say, a thousand to fifteen hundred feet wide.
I was gonna ask about what...
You mean, you can't just, I mean, that was one of our options right away. Can we just relocate it two hundred feet to avoid the site? Well, the site is, is expansive. So I don't want to be too pessimistic, but we're kind of in a tough spot, to be honest with you. But, you know, if we want to use federal aid for this project, that's the requirements. That's
Sure.
That's just part of that red tape that we fight with all the time.
If we don't do special aid, we just do it, then we don't have to deal with any of that?
I think there would be less, but I still think there would be some. So there's, there's a few unknowns other than we know there's a problem. We just don't know what the solution is right now. So I wish I could give the commission a definite answer, but it's kind of a few unknowns right now. Any other questions that I tried to answer best, best to my ability, I guess?
That's interesting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody here from KLJ? Okay, there's no one here. Okay. Next, we go to the DSU Sanford Complex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, my name is Steve Easton, president at Dickinson State. I have several other people to address you, so I'll try to be brief. I'm not particularly good at being brief, but I'll try to be brief as an introduction. I think the commissioners are aware of this project, the Stanford Sports Complex. On the, you might say, the, the portion of Dickinson State property used to have the rodeo grounds on it, all the way over to, across the, across the street from Hawks Point. That's the area that we are talking about. The basic project is four softball fields. One of those softball fields, the one that says American, except the new version will say Bavera. The southeastern softball field will be a fully turfed field. So that'll be artificial turf throughout the entire field. That's really critical for both us and the high school, because the time of the year when we play, it, it's really nice to have artificial turf all the way even through the outfield. The other three fields will be turf infields and grass outfields. So similar, similar to the baseball stadium on the south, on the south side of town. And then also, there are two full-size soccer fields and three youth slash practice-sized, sized soccer fields. Those are all, at least depending on how the bids go, of course, those are all planned to be grass surfaces. And then there is the grandstand for the, for the championship softball field, the southeast softball field. And then, of course, some road and parking that is associated with the project. I'm gonna have Coach Stanton in a minute talk about the importance of this project to Dickinson State. We did make a decision at Dickinson State not to just make this a Dickinson State project. The, the championship softball field is particularly important to us at Dickinson State for reasons that Coach Stanton will explain. But we think that this is a rare opportunity to build a green space and community project in the middle of town. Usually those types of projects have to go on the outside of town. It's time to use this land. Dickinson State, I mean, this will still be Dickinson State land, but Dickinson State is, is contributing to this project. It's time to expand that recreation. If you think about, after this is built, there'll be a real recreation corridor in the middle of town with the West River Recreation Center kitty corner from this, from this complex. And we're very excited about it. We intentionally made this an area project, not a Dickinson State project. I'm gonna have, I think Coach Stanton will talk next.
Yeah, my name's Pete Stanton. I'm the athletic director at Dickinson State. As President Easton said, this has been about a two-year situation where we've partnered with the Park and Rec and the Dickinson Public Schools to, to come up, as he said, with, with a something that we can do together with a community, community project. And that's how it started. We got a little slowed down with, with COVID. But for Dickinson State, as President Easton mentioned, it's, and what Dickinson High is, Guy Fridley will talk about, gives our, our women's softball team an equitable facility. And that's one of the big things for us, that they have, we have an equitable facility compared to where our baseball teams play at. It's also a partnership with, with a community partnership, as President Easton said, where we envision our, our youth programs, our youth soccer programs, our youth softball programs being able to all use this facility. For us at Dickinson State, it's a great recruiting tool, not just for our women's softball team, but for, for all of our students. So, you know, we're partners with this community, and we think it's gonna be a major thing in our, our recruiting to have this type of facility also for, for people that... in our, our recruiting to have this type of facility also for, for people that work at Dickinson State. And then obviously for us as well, we, we're not able to host tournaments and, and whether it's at the conference level, the regional level or the national level. So we think that's really important for, for us. And, and I know Guy Fridley with, with Dickinson Public Schools, they, they feel the same way.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, like Coach Stanton said, it's, it's a big community project for us to collaborate with, uh, Dickinson Parks and Recs and Dickinson State University to make a project like this come into fruition. And I'll be brief, talking about tournaments. Um, right now we just have facilities that we're not allowed, not allowed, but we're not able to bring in tournaments just because we don't have the, the facilities to be able to do it and bring teams from the ESAS states. Sometimes, um, as you see, uh, high school activities events, there's not a lot of events on the west side of Highway eighty-three in Bismarck. This will create, uh, a, a very good, uh, possibility of us to have state tournament events here, especially the championship softball field. I also serve on the North Dakota High School Activity Association Board and we met last week. And preliminary right now Dickinson Public Schools will be the host of the twenty-twenty-eight state softball tournament because of this project. We would never get that opportunity before that. Um, once this project is done, we will reconvene as a, as a committee for the tournament committee. And I'll be requesting that we do host the tournament in twenty-twenty-four as well. And my goal is to host, uh, the state softball tournament every three years. On top of that, when you host a state softball tournament, the state baseball and softball tournament are tied together. So we get to host both, both events, state softball and state baseball together. Um, so that, that's one huge piece that I feel that community will be able to, uh, gain from this project is tournaments that will bring revenue back into our community, but also allow our families that have to travel every weekend somewhere to be able to, to host a tournament in our own community. As you can see, uh, the soccer fields is as well on this project. Um, right now our community don't have, doesn't have really any soccer fields to be able to host tournaments. This will create some, some tournament atmosphere, uh, possibilities for our soccer community as well. Um, if you have ever been to a soccer game at Dickinson High School, we, we started it three years ago. And, um, just from the growth of youth soccer, I believe there's close to five to six hundred youth soccer kids now in our community. It's probably the fastest growing, uh, sport in our community. And we just don't have a, a real great soccer field to play on. Right now we're playing on the Dickinson State University campus and, and we're gracious enough for them to allow us to play there, but just isn't a facility for soccer. This will give those six hundred kids, along with the facility that Dickinson Parks and Recs have on the northwest side of their, uh, of the community center, to be able to hold and safely hold, um, a complex to where they can have those six hundred kids compete and play. But I think, I also serve on the Dickinson Diamonds Board, so it seems like I'm on enough boards here. But, um, this will allow Dickinson Diamonds, a youth softball, uh, group to host tournaments during the summer as well. Just not the North, North Dakota High School Activities Association tournaments that are in the spring, but also state tournaments, uh, for Dickinson Diamonds that usually typically take place in July, but also tournaments throughout the weekends, uh, throughout the year. Like I, like I mentioned before, and I'll close here, this is just a project that will allow us to bring tournaments to the west side of, of North Dakota. Right now everybody's traveling Bismarck and east. And I just think this is a great opportunity for us to be able to, to have some pride in hosting some tournaments and have facility that we can, uh, proudly host these tournaments in.
Good morning Commissioners. James Kramer, Parks and Recreation. I think you've heard the word collaboration quite a bit from all the different entities. Um, in my thirty years of being here, this is probably one of the projects where I've seen more collaboration than, than ever before. To think that we're going to get all these political subdivisions involved and we're going to end up with a, a community public facility on state land. Um, I don't think I would have thought that could happen before. Uh, our role in this is going to be to develop a joint powers agreement to make all of that work. Um, so what we will do is get the, the school district, the university, the park district, uh, together with a joint powers agreement. Our role will be from the design to the construction to the daily operations and maintenance. So we will be the entity that schedules it, manages it and, and works with these entities to make sure that everything they want to happen at this facility is, is going to happen. So again, from our standpoint, this is a replacement of the North Complex. So as you can see, it's quite an upgrade and we think this is, uh, just a great investment, not only for the community of Dickinson, but for Stark County as well. So thank you again for your time today, and I think there would be, anybody could answer questions if you have any.
I have a couple of questions and I think this is an amazing project, but spectators for soccer, where do they, do they just stand around the field there or what do they do?
So there will be portable bleachers around some of the different soccer areas. Um, right now there is not plans for permanent bleachers, which is very common at soccer facilities. But yes, a lot of it is just standing around and observing.
Bring your, bring your lawn chair.
Yep, that too. Yep.
And then parking for spectators and just on the street there or what's, what's the plan going to be for that?
So the, the concrete parking lot there is planned. There's also room to the west of that for another parking lot. And then they line up with the road that goes between the Egg Building and the back parking lot. So the back parking lot is actually the overflow for larger events.
Oh, that's great.
So, James, where are you at with your joint powers agreement?
We've just started it because we're waiting to make sure we have a full understanding of the design. Um, but we're very close to being able to identify the, the roles of all the, the different entities.
What's the, uh, total cost estimated at this point? Don't bail out on me now.
All right.
We have, we believe this is a seven million dollar project. Um, now, uh, we're going to keep raising money, uh, you know, uh, what will be the actual cost? We're not going to know until we bid the project out. We do have a very aggressive, um, design and, uh, construction plan in mind. We want this, uh, we want this project to be completed in the next building season in twenty-twenty-two. So we're aiming for October or November of twenty-twenty-two. Um, it's a little difficult to know exactly how construction bids are going to come in in an environment where we've had a lot of inflation. We had another project at Dickinson State, the Paul Verhoev Project, that turned out to be a great time to bid a project. We don't really know, February will be when, we'll be bidding it out. Um, but we see this as a seven million dollar project. Is that, is that, is that fair statement?
That's fair. Um, we've always used seven million as that, as a threshold. And I think, um, there's roughly one, one point two million of that to raise is where, is where the foundation is at. And that's a very accurate schedule. Our, our design team is hoping to bid it in February, award contracts. Um, April, May construction start with a, a late fall finish.
You're saying there's one point two million left to raise?
Correct.
Okay.
Ty, am I close there? I don't want to.
So is there a competitive difference in high school and, uh, college softball regarding the physical size of the fields? Okay. And all four of those meet that, uh, tournament criteria?
There's minimum required, minimum requirements for the field.
Right, that's what I'm asking about.
But yeah, so the minimum length is two hundred and you can go. If I remember serves right, it's going to be two.
Got it.
And this, these two.
Right. And access for the, uh, concrete parking lot is off of thirteenth or off of state or both?
Currently off of thirteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
We appreciate, if there's no further questions, we appreciate your time and your consideration. We do have a, a, a request for, uh, county support of five hundred thousand dollars. We appreciate your consideration of that, uh, of that request and, um, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ken, did you have another question?
Question maybe for, uh, Mr. Fridley. In, in the presentation, I, I heard public schools, uh, Park and Rec, DSU. Is this facility going to be made available to other, uh, school districts in the county? And can you maybe?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. That's somewhere James can maybe answer too, because that's going to be part of the joint powers agreement as well and how that will operate, just like the BAC does right now. It'll be very similar to that somewhat, James. James can probably answer that a lot better than I can. But the one thing I did talk about that, you know, Hart River, um, South Heart and Bell Fields Co-op does have softball and that's something that I did request last week too, that I'd like to see the Class B softball tournament is here as well and I'm more than happy to manage it. South Heart Bell Field Co-op of Hart River would be the host, but I have no problem managing that, just to continue having use of this facility with other county agencies as well.
And, and including in that you would, and I'm sure you're going to say yes, but I'm going to ask the question anyhow. Would that also include the Trinity School System?
Yeah, so Dickinson Trinity is part of our softball program. So they have a co- cooperative agreement that they, their students come over and play baseball and softball. I think Dixon Trinity comes over for fifteen to sixteen sports currently that is hosted by Dickinson Public Schools. And softball is one of them.
Chairman, so this is on state land and you have three different entities. So is there, did you get state? I mean, were you able to get some granting, grant from the state then?
Yeah, so, uh, we do not anticipate giving up ownership of this land. It'll, it'll still be Dickinson State's property. Uh, but the question about permission is an, is an interesting one. We first have to get permission to raise the funds. And then in January, we will have, from the State Board of Higher Education, which is our governing entity. In January, we will have to get approval to engage in the construction. And their number one question will be, how much of the money have you raised? And, uh, and how much of it is cash in the bank and how much of it is pledges? Uh, and, and we expect that to happen in January. There's a committee that meets early in the month and then we hope to be presenting to the State Board in January. And that's the kind of two-step process that the State Board puts us through at Dickinson State. Uh, but we do, um, we do expect this to still be Dickinson State real estate.
Yes.
We're contributing the use of the real estate and we think it's a really good, uh, a really good decision. I mean, the, um, the community basically bought this land for Dickinson State, as I understand it, a long time ago. And the idea was for expansion of Dickinson State. Uh, and.
Huge rodeo ground.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Uh, and of course, there have been some other projects we've lost that we intended to put on. But in higher education now, I don't see a lot of additional academic buildings. And, and that's why I think it's time to use this land. Um, um, so that's part of our overall strategy about, um, this is a potential community resource that we want to use for the community and for us. I mean, selfishly, that this is going to be quite a facility for us too. But there is a process we'll have to go through. They'll ask us, how much have you raised? And then hopefully, we anticipate they'll grant us permission to do the construction.
Is there a lot more cash in the bank than grants or pretty much even or?
Cash, pledges right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's all, all support is, is welcome.
Okay.
Um, cash payments are especially welcome, we, you know. Thank you, Commissioner.
So the rodeo grounds and where the rodeo, the arena is outside, that's all going to be left alone?
Yeah, that will be left alone. That will stay outside and that's where I left that room for them as well for additional parking for the rodeo.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment to, um, when do you need this money? Like thirty days from now?
Um, yeah, I'd like Ty to answer that question. He's, 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 yesterday.
Uh, I'm Ty Orton. Thank you, uh, for, for having us over here. What we're looking to do is kind of an odd project. We are raising the money from July first of this year to the end of this year. And we are pushing extremely hard. Everybody knows DSU's gone through some things and we, we are back on our feet. We're doing some things strong. And, and really to show how strong we're doing this, this project is done without any type of loan. Okay? We've asked people to pay upfront as much as possible, front-end load this. And we've had a lot of people come in and said, including several of our spilled, our field sponsors that have said, we understand what you're doing. Here's the full check all at once. And that has really pushed this project to the next level so that we can pay everything off July, August of twenty-twenty-two. So that's what we're working on doing.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, just a kind of a follow-up question. In looking at our agenda, we have five organizations, entities preparing, uh, to present requests for projects. And while I agree that all five of these projects are, um, great projects and, and, um, warrant, uh, county, um, involvement in the, in the form of funding. But what I'm concerned about is that, um, you know, where is the money going to come from? And with that, with that in mind, I would like to, um, propose that we uh, form some type of, um, committee, if you will, uh, to, uh, weigh in on all five of these projects, just to see, um, uh, what their merits are and where we can, uh, help. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that or? Do you want to have the auditor, I guess, talk about a little bit of money for the, um, American Rescue Plan funding we have?
Just to give an update to the commission, I had sent out, um, just kind of a chart sheet to say where the money has been pledged and where it has been spent and where the balance is sitting, um, currently for the twenty-twenty-one, um, American Rescue Plan spent, pledged amount. Um, there is seven hundred and eighty-two thousand seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. That has not been allocated or spent, um, for the twenty-twenty-one. We have not received, obviously, the twenty-twenty-two portion. We will see when that comes in the summer. Um, there's already a million of that pledged to the CTE Academy. There is also still twenty-twenty ARPA funding left. Obviously you just approved nineteen thousand, um, dollars for the water tanker. Um, so that would leave about a balance of three eighty-seven of the twenty-twenty ARPA funding, um, not ARPA funding, excuse me, CARES Act funding. The only thing I have with the DSU complex is in order for it to qualify under the ARPA, um, American Rescue Plan spending, so out of the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, is it has to be considered, um, outdoor recreation, which it would be if we were paying for like the fields or the outdoor portion of it. Um, that would qualify for the ARPA funds. So that's just an update where, where everything is.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, um, I agree with Commissioner Xander. We do have a number of requests coming in forward to us. I would wish that, or I would hope that we as a full board, uh, deal with those rather than a, a subcommittee. Uh, and even if it took, to be honest with you, a special meeting between now and the end of the month, I think we need to hear everybody out. We need to put the public on notice that if they have a, uh, some kind of project that would be a qualifying project, they need to, uh, to bring that forth fairly quickly. And then we can decide what we have rather than allocate and pledge some of these funds. And then a real good project comes forth in March and then we, and then we don't have the funds. So.